Amen, amen. All right, so we're on page 29. And if you don't have a book, hopefully, surely I'll have one before next Sunday night. But anyhow, we're gonna look at Philippians, chapter 4, verse 7. It's where we finished up, just kind of a little, little quick review of where we finished up last week. But we are on page 29 in our, our little study we've been working on. The comment is posed there, and the question says, "Peter saw no comparison between any loss a person might suffer through persecution and the lasting value of genuine faith." So Peter was, there were some comparisons there. And the question that we finished up with last Sunday night is, "Is your faith more valuable than anything you might lose during a time of persecution? Is your faith more valuable than anything you might lose during a time of persecution?" And we talked a little bit this morning about persecution and the fact that, you know, I do feel like the church is coming under persecution again, it's just in a different way. It's in a more subtle way. It's not necessarily physically violent like it has been in years prior in other countries, but the church has definitely fallen under persecution, so something for us to think about. But verse 7 says, Philippians, chapter 4, and verse 7, "And the peace of God which passed all understanding shall keep your hearts and minds through Jesus Christ." And I encourage you, read chapter 4. And it talks about getting our focus on the Lord. So just something to think about is, "Is your faith more valuable than anything you might lose?" And there was a story one time, it was probably just to show a point about how important salvation is. And this family was on a boat, was more families than just the one. The boat began to sink, and there were two kids that were on the verge of drowning. One was the man's son, which he knew was saved, and the other was the man's son, not the man's son, which he knew was not. And the man had to make that decision really quick on, "Who am I gonna save?" And he went to the lost kid because he knew that his son was saved. And, you know, hopefully, we don't ever have to make any choice like that, no Abraham-type choice. But, you know, how important is our faith? And how strongly do you believe in it? How strongly do you believe in your salvation? And is Jesus enough? Is Jesus enough? And are we teaching our children that Jesus Christ is the most important thing? Are we supporting the fact that our children get saved? And are we doing anything to really build upon that? And you've heard me say many times, if you haven't been, you have an opportunity to just stop what you're doing and put your focus on Christ. You still have an opportunity. You're still breathing, your children are still breathing, you still have an opportunity. So that brings us to where we're gonna pick up today. Peter said that to those who were suffering or might suffer, 1 Peter, chapter 3, verse 13 through 17, "And who is he? Who will harm you if you become followers of what is good? But even if you should suffer for righteousness sake, you are blessed." And a lot of times, you know, we feel like we're suffering. Maybe, maybe our relationship is suffering, maybe our marriage is suffering, maybe our finances are suffering, maybe our job is suffering. And a lot of times, we just feel persecuted and suffering. But is it for righteousness sake? Or is it because of poor decisions that we've made that have put us in tough situations? And if we're really honest with ourself, a lot of times, our suffering is self-inflicted. But we don't have to keep doing that. You know, we say, "Well, I've never been the head of my house, I'm just gonna keep doing what I'm doing." Well, stop and make the decision to put the Lord first. So even if we suffer for righteousness sake, you're blessed. And do not be afraid of their threats, nor be troubled, but sanctify the Lord God in your hearts and always be ready to give a defense to everyone who asks. And, you know, our lifestyle should be our defense. You know, I've heard Brother Gilson say it, I've heard others say it, when it comes to doing a funeral, and you say, you know, "She's already prepared the message in her life, in his life." I mean, those are just, those are the easiest ones to do, when you don't have to get up there and hope. Hope just maybe, in their last breath, maybe they ask Christ to be their Savior. And I've been in several like that. And then I've been, matter of fact, all I really can think of is one, that they just flat-out knew he didn't want nothing to do with Christ. And people say, "Well, how in the world do you preach that, that, that service, you know, that funeral?" Well, I'm not preaching to that individual, I'm preaching to the family. I'm ministering to the family. That's how you, that's how you get through those. So again, but sanctify the Lord God in your hearts and always be ready to give a defense to everyone who asks you a reason for the hope that is in you with meekness and fear, having a good conscience that when they defame you as evildoers, those who revile your good conduct in Christ may be ashamed. For it is better if it is the will of God to suffer for doing good than for doing evil. So he says, you know, that you should live in such a way that ultimately, those that have ridiculed you, those that have tried to defame you, ultimately, they're gonna feel ashamed because they know what you're doing is right. They know what you're doing is true. You know, you think of sometimes, you look at people and you're like, "No, how, you know that's not true?" You know, and that's the thing, if you've had kids and they come home and say, "Well, so-and-so said this and said that," and you say, "Baby, is it true?" No, then don't worry about it. Just let them go on about it. They're gonna end up, and the Bible talks about, you know, those that dig a pit. But basically, they're gonna fall in their own pit. Be careful with that. But what's your life saying? So in what ways might being a follower of what is good, displaying good conduct in Christ, keep a person from being persecuted? Is doing good deeds a certain vaccination against suffering? Why or why not? Kind of, kind of two or three layers of question posed there. Anybody wanna tackle any of that?
Doing good deeds is not a vaccination against suffering because we're living in a worldly world.
Yes, ma'am.
And not everybody believes the same way you do. And so they're not gonna act accordingly. And sometimes you get caught in the middle.
Yeah. So I just, I wrote, you know, not so much that it keeps us away from persecution, but it keeps us in, keeps it in proper perspective when we see things. I mean, if you, if you go and you have to deal with somebody that you already know ahead of time, it ain't gonna be good, then why you get mad when it ain't good? You know, you already know, and we set ourselves up for failure sometimes. But, but when we are, when we are in the Word of God, when we are living a life that you're always ready to give a defense, then it keeps it in proper perspective. But we must entertain the thought, again, are we suffering for our own foolishness? Are we suffering for our own foolishness? Yes, sir.
So my thought was, when it asked, "Keep a person from being persecuted," that it doesn't necessarily keep you from being persecuted, it gets you through the persecution.
Yep.
Because my first thought was like Paul and Silas, chained up, you know, and then they were set free just by singing praises. They got them through the persecution, not kept from it.
And in most cases, we see that in Scripture, that God didn't save them from. Most of the time, He got them through or saved them.
It didn't meshachchah, meshachchah out of the fire.
It didn't keep them out of the fire. They got thrown right up the middle of it. And because of their faith. And I think that's, we'll get to that example actually here in just a little bit. So Colossians, chapter 3, verse 23. "The Bible says, 'And whatsoever you do, do it heartily, as to the Lord, and not unto men.'" So why? Why should you, you know, people, and, you know, we probably pose this to our children maybe, but us adults need to look at it too, is, you know, do good, even when nobody's looking. There's never, and y'all heard me say, there's never a right time to do wrong, there's never a wrong time to do right. Never a right time to do wrong, never a wrong time to do right. So whatsoever you do, do it heartily, as to the Lord, and not unto men. Romans, chapter 8, verse 31, verse of Scripture there. Romans, chapter 8, verse 31. "The Bible says, 'What shall we say then to these things? If God be for us, who can be against us?'" That's ultimately what it really comes down to. If you know the Lord as your personal Savior, and that is exactly where Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego worked, when King Nebuchadnezzar, he liked them. They were some of the finest men on the plan, physically, even, he wanted good-looking men, not just physically fit. And, but they said, Romans 8:31, "What shall we say then to these things? If God be for us, who can be against us?" They said, "Go ahead, king. I mean, we like you, and, but we're not bound to you. We're not gonna bound to you." So God's on your side, you really don't have a whole lot to worry about. So think about something. If we're really living for the Lord, we'll gain even evil's respect. But if we're faking it, even evil will call us out. And it took me a while, I could not remember where that verse of Scripture was. And I dug and dug and dug, in Acts, chapter 19, and verse 15. I almost called in, you know, one of them shows where you get to call in? You can't think of the answer, I almost called you, Brother Gilson. They're sitting at the house a while ago. Acts, chapter 19, and verse 15. Hopefully, I didn't write down the wrong address. Yeah, here we go. "And the evil spirit answered and said, 'Jesus, I know him; and Paul, I know him; but who are you?'" I mean, they were coming trying to minister, but not for Christ. They were faked. And I mean, even the evil spirit said, "Now, I know who Jesus is, and I know old Paul, and you ain't within either one of them." That, that's kinda what we're dealing with nowadays. But, you know, so we need to live in a way that even the evil spirit says, "Oh, yeah, that man, he's got it going on. I don't believe in him, I ain't gonna follow him, but I know what he's doing is true." Kinda crazy, think about that, even the evil spirit. So Paul wrote, "If we suffer," top of page 30 there, "if we suffer," again, "for righteousness sake, then you're blessed." So how did you respond to that? I mean, are you willing? Are you ready and are you willing? Most of us would say, "Oh, oh, yeah." But are you really? How do you respond to that? So if we suffer, you're blessed, if you're suffering for righteousness sake. And oftentimes, you know, with our jobs, you know, we may have to make decisions. Kind of, one of my bosses told me back under, a couple presidents ago, he said, "Well, son, you can do it or you can not do it. Sometimes you gotta make a career choice." I said, "Yes, sir. I'm well aware of that." Let's look at James, chapter 1, verse 2. Somebody wanna read that? James, chapter 1, verse 2. All right.
My brethren, count it all joy when you fall into various trials, knowing that the testing of your faith produces patience.
So you go and, you read all of that there, and it talks about how one thing leads into another thing, leads into another thing, it's that growing process, that sanctification process. When you call upon Jesus Christ to save you, you are saved fully, 100%. But you're not as mature as you ought to be. You're not as mature as you're gonna be, that's when you, that sanctification process. And this, this kinda sort of explains that there. You know, it talks about these diverse temptations or these trials, and this, this working. And, you know, it produces patience, and patience, when it produces perfect work, and perfect work, and entire wanting nothing, and if any of you like wisdom, let him ask of God, that give it to all men liberally. Philippians, chapter 1, verse 29. Somebody wanna read that? Philippians 1:29. You can read back there too.
I got it.
All right, go ahead.
For to you it has been graded on behalf of Christ, not only to believe in him, but also to suffer for his sake.
So Paul telling the church of Philip out here, you know, what, what may have to happen, not only to believe on him, but also to suffer for his sake. There is a ministry, there can be a ministry in suffering. But we must be aware of the suffering that is self-inflicted versus for righteousness sake. This awareness comes with maturity. A lot of times, you know, you teach somebody something, you know, maybe you think of sports, basketball, baseball, football, whatever, and you say, "No, you need to, you need to stop doing this and start doing this." And as they mature and learn, then the bell goes off, "Oh, I didn't realize that was causing me, you know, to do whatever." And the same thing in Christianity. A lot of times, people don't realize that something at a minimum is harming your testimony, is harming your witness, is harming, you know, what you say you're standing for. Peter quoted a passage from Isaiah, which says more fully, "Do not say a conspiracy concerning all that this people call a conspiracy, nor be afraid of their threats, nor be troubled; the Lord host him you shall hallow or honor. Let him be your fear; let him be your dread." Lots, we worry so much about what the world thinks and overlook what the Lord thinks about what we're doing. So why do you do what you do? Why do you not do what you don't? You know, Paul talked about that, wasn't he? Paul says, "Of that which I know to do good, I don't do it; of that which I shouldn't do, I do it." You know, he struggled with the same thing, but he kept moving forward. He didn't just throw his hands up and say, "Well, I just can't do good." How is fear of the Lord different than a fear of persecutors? And how does fear of the Lord eclipse fear of persecution? So first one, how is a fear of the Lord different than a fear of persecutors?
Fear of not man. Fear of God. Who can claim the truth? That fear of the Lord is respected.
Right. So they have all, respect, love, honor, praise, worthy. And then fear of a persecutor, when we start putting our focus on the persecutor rather than the Lord, it's insecurity. Maybe we have a fear of personal loss. And many times, you know, Jesus talked to different ones, and, and I've got the Scriptures written down a little bit later, and another point about, "Oh, ye of little faith." Oh, ye of little faith. You know, people, you know, something's going on, and you know you're on a job maybe, and you know things that are going on are ungodly around you, and, and then you end up giving in because you say, "I just can't risk losing this job." So you trust Jesus Christ to save you from a burning devil's hell, but you don't trust Him enough to think He's gonna take care of you, that you've made a righteous decision and He isn't gonna provide later? I mean, that's those points where Jesus is going. Man, do you not remember we just fed 4,000 people last week? And you don't think we can feed this group of people? That's how we are. And that's where He talked to His disciples, and He's like, "We just got through seeing a miracle." And y'all have forgot already. That, that's how sometimes, that just wee bit of faith there. Let's look at Matthew, chapter 22, very familiar set of Scriptures, been preached on a whole bunch. I've used it quite a few times, Matthew, chapter 22. So if God be for us, right, we read that one a while ago in Romans. But Matthew 22, verse 37 through 40, true love. Again, you know, the, the young lawyer, I guess he could speak the best, so they sent him over. I just, I picture in my mind, because if you go back and you read the rest of that chapter, or at least the last few verses prior to that, you know, the Sadducees and Pharisees were kinda like the Democrats and Republicans. Every now and then, they would have something that was bipartisan. And so in this case, they had something bipartisan, they both hated Jesus. And so they get this, they were always trying to trip him, trip him up and mess him up and try to make him look bad. So this, this little sharp lawyer comes over and says, "Master, which is the great commandment in the law?" And we've talked about it. You know, if he were to say one was more important than the other, then they would say, "We got you." Because not one is more important than the other. But Jesus, knowing what they were thinking already, He says, "Thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, with all thy soul, with all thy mind." He said, "This is the first and great commandment, and the second is like unto it, thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." He says, "On these two hang all the rest of them. They all hang from these two." And I just gotta thank that old boy, he said, "Hey, He got us again. We just can't, we just can't outsmart Him. That's who we serve." So Peter, Peter offered an explanation for what happens to the person who undergoes a fiery trial. So 1 Peter, chapter 4, verses 1 through 5 there. "Since Christ suffered," and we all, we can't hold a candle to what He suffered. "Since Christ suffered for us in the flesh, arm yourselves also with the same mind; for he who has suffered in the flesh has ceased from sin." There's that major change that should happen in us, "that he no longer should live the rest of his time in the flesh for the lust of men, but for the will of God." We talked about that this morning in prayer. "For we have spent enough of our past lifetime in doing the will of the Gentiles when we walked in lootiness, lust, drunkenness, ru- ru-" Somebody say that for me.
Revelry.
Revelries, drinking parties, abominable idolatries. And in regard to these, they think it's strange that you do not run with them in the same flood of dispensation, dissipitation, speaking evil of you. They will give an account to him who is ready to judge the living and the dead. So, you know, we don't need to run with the crowd. We need to step away and not get caught up in doing the same things they're doing. So again, I say it all the time, and I will continue to say it. If you're participating in, if you're partaking in things that are not bringing honor and glory to God, then you need to stop. It's just that simple. You need to quit doing it. And, and like I, you know, talked about this morning, and I have for quite a while, about being honest about our sins, "Well, you know, I just, this is, this is my, whatever, and at least I don't do what so-and-so does." And we go to start doing that, and you are robbing yourself, and you are putting yourself under self-inflicted persecution, is what you're doing. So Paul wrote, "He who has suffered in the flesh has ceased from sin." One interpretation of this, that suffering has a certain purifying effect on a person. That, and again, you know, there can very well be a ministry in righteous suffering. A person who is confronting physical suffering for the faith has neither inclination nor ability to engage in the behaviors of sin. Let's get down to the suffering Christian who remains true to the faith, exhibits to all who see his life that the power of sin is nothing compared to the power of faith. We should not participate in things that are ungodly. And, you know, we, and it, and it still to this day, it amazes me at the church people who will try their best to defend someone's sin. Much less their own. But they'll try, "Well, I just, you know, oh, so-and-so, she, he." It just, stop trying to defend sin. Stop making it okay to sin. We are not helping anybody in maturing in Christ by making them feel like their sin is okay. Hebrews, chapter 4, verse 15. This is the Christ we serve. Hebrews, chapter 4, and verse 15. If you say, "Well, the Lord just don't understand what I've been through. The Lord just don't understand." Or so-and-so just don't understand. "For we have not a high priest which cannot be touched with the feeling of our infirmities." Because see, Jesus came down and was fully man in the flesh. "But was in all points tempted, like as we are, yet without sin." Jesus was tempted in every manner like we are, lust of the eyes, lust of the flesh, the pride of light, every sin falls underneath one of those. Every sin does. But we have to keep our focus right. Let's look at Romans, chapter 6, verse 14. We've got several verses here, somebody wanna read along with? Romans 6:14 through 23. All right, I'll read it. Romans, chapter 6, verse 14. "For sin shall not have dominion over you; for you are not under the law, but under grace. What then shall we sin, because we are not under the law, but under grace? God forbid." And a lot of people, again, that, that old, "Oh, you Baptists believe, once saved, always saved. You can just get saved and then go sin and live like the devil." Not according to the Scripture. See, that was going on, and the Roman Christians here are being corrected. "What then shall we sin, because we're not under the law, but under grace? God forbid." You go back up to the very beginning of that chapter, you see the same words there, "God forbid." "Know ye not that to whom you yield yourself servants to obey is servant you are, to whom you obey, whether of sin unto death, or of obedience unto righteousness? But God be faint that you were in the past the servants of sin; but you have obeyed from the heart the form of doctrine which was delivered to you, you give it all to him; then, then made free from sin, you became servants of righteousness." This is the conversion that should have happened. If you have truly accepted Jesus Christ as your personal Savior, and I'm not saying you're, you're not gonna have battles and struggles, you still will. But your, but your desire should have changed. If it didn't, there's something majorly went wrong there. Verse 19. "I speak after the manner of men because of the infirmity of your flesh; but as you have yielded your members' servants to uncleanness and to iniquity, and unto iniquity, even so now yields your members' servants to righteousness, unto holiness." He's reminding them, he's teaching them, he's telling them, "Look, stop going back. Yield your, your members' servants to righteousness unto holiness. For when you were the servants of sin, you were, you were free from righteousness. What fruit had you then in those things whereof you are now ashamed? For the end of those things is dead. But now, being made free from sin and become servants to God, you have your fruit unto holiness and the end everlasting life; for the wages of sin is what? Death. But the gift of God is eternal life through Jesus Christ, our Lord." All right, page 32 there. I'm gonna skip that top one, go down to the middle of the page. Peter gave admonition for dealing with the devil. He gave us some advice here for the force behind all fiery trials, so that the devil is gonna do everything he can to attempt to make you fall, particularly if you call yourself a believer. So 1 Peter, chapter 5, verse 8 through 11 in our book there, says, "Be sober." We could, we could take that a lot of different ways. You know, there is, you know, drinking too much alcohol, you're not gonna be sober, but it's talking about a whole lot more than just that. But be sober. There's another area that says, "Be sober-minded, be vigilant; because your adversary, the devil, walks about like a roaring lion, seeking whom he may devour." We talked about that in our Sunday morning Bible study. You know, lions, they're fairly lazy by nature. And, and I think that's alluded to, and here he says, "You know, the devil walks about like a roaring lion, seeking whom he may devour." You know, we talk about the importance of coming and congregating and growing together in Christ versus hanging out out there on your own. The old lion, he just kinda slips around, walks around, tries to find somebody out there on their own, by himself, that's now weak, weak in their faith. That's the one he gets, gets somebody isolated. It is so important that we stay together. He says, "Resist him steadfast in the faith, knowing that the same sufferings are experienced by your brotherhood in the world, somebody else is going through the same thing." But, but you know, I've told a lot of people that, something bad happens, and they say, "Why, why, why?" And I said, "Look, I don't, I don't really know. But I can tell you this, the Lord may very well be preparing you to help minister to somebody else that's gonna go through this same thing, that's gonna go through this same loss that you're going through." So, you know, again, knowing that the same sufferings are experienced by your brotherhood in the world, "but may the God of all grace, who calls us to His eternal glory by Christ Jesus, after you have suffered a while, perfect, established, strengthened, and settled you. To Him be the glory and the dominion forever and ever." Amen. Peter says, "Man, give it all to God, give Him all the glory." The question there, how does it make a difference in the way you deal with persecution or a fiery trial, to recognize that the source of the persecution is really the devil trying to get you to fall away, is what he's trying to do? So how does it make a difference in the way that you deal with persecution? Surely, somebody's dealt with it a little bit. All right, James, chapter 3, verse 17. Again, this, this wisdom that we should seek and will help us in dealing with persecution and being able to recognize the source of things, is if we're focusing on the right provider. But the wisdom that is from above, we talked about this either this, this morning or last Sunday morning, I forget. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure. It is pure. And when we're focusing on that wisdom, it says, "Then it's peaceable, gentle, and easy to be entreated, full of mercy, good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy." And we touched on it just a little bit a while ago, and, well, really, we touched on this one quite a bit. You know, James, chapter 1, I encourage you, go read that, and you'll talk, you'll see what James was preparing us for, and just saying, "You are going to suffer." He says, "My brethren, count it all joy when," not "in," falling into diverse. He says, "all kinds of temptations, when it happens." Top of page 33 there. Top of page 33 there. "In what practical ways do you remain sober and vigilant against the adversary of your soul? In what practical ways?" I'm going to check y'all's notes. Give y'all a break.
Number one, through prayer.
Yes, sir.
Church and listening. And music, you know, we're ready to do some good music.
Absolutely.
Prayer and studying gospel.
Alert to his methods of temptation and slipping into our lives.
And slippery and sneaky he is.
As he is.
Old devil. So Philippi's chapter two, verse two, it's just some practical ways. Says, "Fulfill ye my joy, that you be like-minded with Christ, not with man, having the same love, being of one accord and of one mind." So all of that is pointing to Christ. Like-minded with Christ. Have the same love as Christ, being of one accord with Christ, of one mind with Christ. It's, that is repetition of what we need to focus on. Let's look at Romans chapter 15, verse five. Somebody want to read that? Romans 15, five? All right. "Now the God of patience and consolation grant you to be like-minded, one toward another, according to who? Christ Jesus." It doesn't say, "Now you two need to get along." You know how we, you know, how we, you know, two kids, all right, y'all going to do this project together. You're going to learn how to get along. Who we need to learn how to get along with is Jesus Christ. Who we need to learn who to follow after is Jesus Christ. Who we need to learn who to emulate is Jesus Christ. "To be like-minded, one toward another, according to Christ Jesus." It goes back to, you know, the fact that I've told you, again, you know, my goal is to get y'all in the same mind with Christ. And when we do that, then we all are going to be like-minded, is what it's talking about here. Next little section there. "Peter saw the end result of suffering as persecution, establishment, strength, and a settled feeling, the end result of suffering." This is the way Peter looked at it. But see, he said, he was suffering as Christ suffered. He was suffering for righteousness sake. And he says, "When you're doing that, the end result is perfection, that maturing process, establishment, you know, strength, and a settled feeling. No matter what happens, when the day is done, he said, 'I did the right thing. I did it for the right reason.'" And that's that feeling that he's talking about there. Has that been your experience? How so? Do these end results give you hope and courage? So can you say, anybody want to share an example of something that you've been through, and maybe you've suffered a little bit through it, but when it was all settled down, settled down, or set and done, and it may not have went the way that you intended for it to go, but when it was all said and done, you say, "You know what? I know I'm in the Lord's will." Anybody got an experience?
I do. We just do our way to go on the dialysis. It was hard on him, it was hard on me. And pray every time we start doing the treatment, and we finally got through it. We were told that we didn't have to stay on it. We found another Bible to lay on.
We're going to win that one too. That's right. So 2 Corinthians chapter 12. Anybody want to read a scripture? 2 Corinthians chapter 12, verse eight through 10. All right.
Yeah, we're slow. We don't even get it.
I cheated, I got there at my y'all's call.
12, eight through 10?
Yes, sir. 2 Corinthians 12, eight through 10.
"For this thing I besought the Lord thrice, that it might depart from me. And he said unto me, My grace is sufficient for thee, for my strength is nay perfect in weakness. Most gladly therefore will I rather glory in my infirmities, that the power of Christ may rest upon me. Therefore I take pleasure in infirmities, in reproaches, in necessities, in persecutions, in distresses, for Christ's sake. For when I am weak, then am I strong."
So we're not told in this scripture here how much time spanned there was between each time that he asked. But I'm going to venture to say, it probably wasn't like a young kid, you know, "Can I go? Can I go? Can I go? Can I go?" I don't figure it's like that. I think it probably, Paul asked, and he said, "All right, I'm going to keep working, because God's going to take this from me." And that's how some of us are, but then we end up falling away from the Lord when he doesn't take it from us. And, and then he didn't, and he come back to the Lord again. He said, "Lord, look, now I've been working hard, and I've heard Christians say this, and we need to be careful with saying this. I've served God all my life, so he ought to take this from me, whether it be cancer or whatever." I've heard people say that. That's kind of a, that's a dangerous place for a Christian to go. And so he comes back to him the second time and says, "All right, Lord, I've been serving, I've been faithful. I mean, I've been, they've thrown rocks at me, I've been snake-bitten, I've been shipwrecked. But look, Lord, the least you could do is fix this infirmity." And he did. So he went on to serve it again, and come back to him the third time. Says, "Look, Lord, folks trying to kill me for you. I'm doing all this for you." The Lord says, "I've told you no once. I've told you no twice, and I'm telling you no again." He says, "Now am I enough? My grace is sufficient." But, but so many, and that's where this, this prosperity gospel is so dangerous. You know, you just, you just serve enough, and God will take it away. You just give enough, and God will take it away. And you just do this, and God will bless you with good health. That's a dangerous place to try to find that in the Scriptures. And Paul gives us a great example. And again, I can't remember whether, but there's a couple of Scriptures that talk about it, about his vision. I don't know if that is exactly what he was bothered with, but whatever it was, was bothering him enough that he asked the Lord three times, "Please," and the Lord said, "No." So why did you think that he wouldn't say no to you when you're asking something? Obviously, it was not in God's will for that infirmity to be removed. I mean, and, and he finally realized that the Lord is allowing this to keep me humble, to keep me humble. And then he realized that in my weakness, with my focus on Christ, I'm strong. That's, that's, that's deep to really think about it. And again, there, and I've said it before, there is a ministry in righteous suffering, but are you willing and prepared to handle a little suffering, to carry your cross and to fight in the name of Christ? Are you ready and prepared for that? All right, in introspection and implications there, next little section. "So people who live in Western cultures are well-appointed with the word compromise. We have to be the epitome of compromise in the United States right now. And if there is, if there is a race going, I'd say, we, if we ain't in first place, brothers and sisters, we're tied. We got to be when it comes to compromise. The word is vital to the functioning of a democratic government. To what extent does the word apply to Christians' expressions of faith in a pluralistic society? Is there ever a situation that warrants compromise of belief, a compromise of behavior associated with belief? Just take, take killing babies, for example. We have preachers, preachers coming out attacking Texas because of their six-week, was it six-week, six-week or nine-week, whatever it was, the law they said in place. Like it was six weeks. That if you're pregnant at six weeks, which is generally from what I've read about when a lady realizes that she's pregnant. So basically, what he's saying is, or what they're saying is, when you realize you're pregnant, you cannot have an abortion, because that is a human being in you, and we're going to do everything. And there's state after state, and right now at the Supreme Court, they're, they're battling over the same type bill in Mississippi, whether to uphold it. And if that is upheld, that is the first humongous blow at getting Roe versus Wade thrown in the garbage where it belongs. And we can save babies. And to say, it is, it is women's health, what about the baby's health? You know, when we start compromising things such as that, and we start laying those things aside, you know, it's like, and we talked about it, I think, last Wednesday, it's like, you know, a little white lie. What's a little white lie?
It's a lie.
It's a lie. And my little analogy was, it's like that white stuff on top of chicken poop. Y'all know what that is? It's chicken poop too. It is chicken poop too. That's what a little white lie is. People, sometimes we feel, well, I mean, I had to, I had to tell my son just a little, you know, a little lie, but no, you just told him a lie. There's no little one, there's no big one. It's kind of like sin. You know what separates you from God? Whether you did one or a million, there is separation. That is why we need Jesus Christ.
I can't help but believe that conception that is a human being.
Absolutely. They've proven it. They've proven it.
It may not look.
Life begins.
May not look like a baby, right?
Unique DNA, life, absolutely. And it's, you know, speaking of how important science is to some, it's been proven scientifically. But we know because it says it in the Bible. Galatians chapter one, I'm going to just refer to a few verses here in compromising our faith or not compromising our faith. Somebody want to read a scripture? Galatians chapter one, verse six and seven?
I will.
All right.
"I marvel that ye are so soon removed from him, that caused you into the grace of Christ unto another gospel, which is not another, but there be some that trouble you and would pervert the gospel of Christ."
So Paul has already explained to them, and he says, "Y'all amaze me. Y'all are amazing me that how quick you fell away. How quick you fell away." And he says, you know, "There is no other gospel. There is no other gospel." And we can, we can read on further and where Paul says, you know, "Even if an angel from heaven gives you another gospel, which there is no other, let him be accursed." And we've talked about Mormonism, you know, guessing, and the guy Joseph Smith that founded, the man that founded Mormonism, that's what he said, "An angel from heaven gave me the manuscripts." But if you study that man, actually, he was known to be crazy. Then another time, he said, "Well, they shouldn't give me the manuscripts that showed me the words to write." And that's where Mormonism got started at. God says, "Let him be accursed."
Over golden tab?
Romans chapter 13, verse 14. So Paul asks, you know, "How? It amazes me that you have so quickly fallen into something that is ungodly." Romans chapter 13, verse 14. Somebody want that?
"But put you on the Lord Jesus Christ, and make not provision for the flesh to fulfill the lust thereof."
So it goes back to what is written about the study there. "Is there ever a situation that warrants compromise of belief, a compromise of behavior associated with your belief? According to the Scriptures, no. According to the Bible, no. And it tells us there, "Make not provision for the flesh to fulfill the lust thereof." You know, things of the flesh, if something has complete control over you, that it can actually change your demeanor, it can change your attitude if you don't do it, then you may want to think about what kind of provision are you making for the flesh? And a lot of things could fall in that category. 2 Corinthians, somebody want another one? 2 Corinthians six. Four and five, 14 and 15, excuse me. 2 Corinthians chapter six, verse 14 and 15.
"Be ye not unequally held together with unbelievers? For what fellowship hath righteousness with unrighteousness? And what communion hath light with darkness?
Verse 15, too.
"And what concord hath Christ with Belial? Or what part hath he that believeth with an infidel? And what agreement hath the temple of God with Ives? For ye are the temple of the living God. As God hath said, I will dwell in them and walk in them, and I will be their God, and they shall be my people."
See, so many times, we try to blend things that you cannot blend. You can do everything you want with oil and water. When you stop, it's just going to separate out again, that don't go together. And we try to do that with provisions of the flesh versus what the Lord has called us to do. We try to mix them. You're never going to have joy, you're never going to have peace when you compromise that belief and you compromise that behavior. Matthew chapter six, and verse 24. Matthew six, and 24.
"No man can serve two masters; for either he will hate the one and love the other, or else he will hold to the one and despise the other. You cannot serve God and man.
When you do something that's compromising your faith, sooner or later, you're going to give in to it. You can't, you can't straddle that fence. I mean, you walk down and try to walk the scale, that top of that fence, sooner or later, you're going to fall, and you're going to get hurt. And the Bible tells us that we can't serve two masters. You're going to really serve one, and the other is going to suffer. And that's compromising that faith." All right, James chapter four, and verse four. There are several, several places we see in the Scripture of warnings, dire warnings about compromising your faith, and how important it is to not. All right, James four, four. Who wants that?
"The adulterers and adulteresses, know ye not that the friendship of the world is enemy of God? Whosoever therefore will be a friend of the world is enemy of God."
Now, I don't know about you guys, but in Galatians, it's clear. In Romans, it's clear. In 2 Corinthians, it's clear. In Matthew, it's clear. In James, it's clear. Don't compromise your faith. Don't compromise. And there are other verses. I just pulled a few to drive that point home. Is there ever a situation that warrants compromise of belief?
No where.
You know, and I hear people that age old, old their boys, old their teenagers, you're making a provision for the flesh, is what you're doing. Just because somebody may do something, doesn't mean you got to say it's okay. Something to think about there. All right. I think we can probably finish up. We just got two pages here and a few points. But Peter wrote, top of page 34. "Always be ready to give a defense to everyone who asks the reason for the hope that is in you with meekness and fear." We talked about that a minute ago. First Peter three, 15. Do you feel as if you have an always-ready defense to offer those who might ask you about your faith? Something for you to think about within yourself there. Do you feel as if you have an always, because the Bible says you need to always be ready? Always. Always be ready. To what extent would you be bold in offering your defense if you knew the person was looking for a justifiable means to persecute you or persecute you further? In what ways is it difficult to give a defense of the faith with meekness and fear? So out of all of that, what I ask is, please, seriously consider the questions. We're called to be serious about our faith. And, and, you know, otherwise, we're showing others it's really just a big foolish joke. We're to be a living sacrifice. We've looked at that in the Scriptures multiple times, about being a living sacrifice. So that number three there, are Christians today being defamed as evildoers? And, yeah. In many cases, we are.
Are we on the list of being...
Being under this administration, yes, ma'am, and other countries? I forget what country it was that recently, in the last few months, placed the Milligram Evangelistic Association under terrorist watch list. So the Bible says that, "Woe unto those that call evil good and good evil." That's what's happening. And I say, it's a different type of persecution that we're under. So we have to be prepared... So we have to be prepared. We have to stand ready always to give a defense, according to the scriptures. So are, are Christians today being defamed as evildoers? Yes, we absolutely are. When Judge Kavanaugh was, was going before the House and the Senate, before Congress, and they tried to rip his life to shreds, you know what most people were the most mad about? His Christian faith. That's what they were the most mad about. As a matter of fact, they said, that in itself disqualifies him. That in itself is discrimination, is what that is.
That's right.
But it's a different kind of persecution. So how should a Christian actively confront the defamation? Love on them anyways, but never compromise your faith. Because see, Jesus died for them too. And if we don't live in a way that portrays that to them, then we are failing in our mission that the Lord has given us. So here's, takes, it takes a little bit deeper, get a little bit more personal. How do you feel about martyrs? Most of the disciples died a martyr. What made you fear? See, that's one of the things that scared the Romans, the, the bigwigs there most was, he sent them soldiers, he said, y'all go guard, because they gonna try to make a martyr out of them. What they didn't realize is Jesus was fixing to make a fool out of them. So how do you feel about martyrs? What do you feel about the potential for being a martyr? You know, the little young lady, I think it was in Colorado with that school shooting? One of the witnesses said, she was asked, I forget the exact words, but it was something to the effect of, where's your God now? Do you believe now? And she said, yes, and they killed her. What kind of faith do we have? So needed to carry on, we need to carry on a passionate cause. Many have died for their faith, yet it seems that today, many ain't even willing to live for it. Much less die for it.
That's right, amen.
And we, we're constantly making excuses for our sinful ways. Number five. Perhaps the greatest story in the Old Testament, and here it is, brothers and sisters, in the Old Testament about a fiery trial is that of Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. They actually had different names, if you go back and study the scriptures previously, that, uh, uh, they were harder. These are harder, but they're easier to remember, I guess, because they're harder. Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, who were persecuted for what? For their faith. Because they would not bow. And a king was tricked into making a rule that would force them to bow. And if they didn't bow, then they had to be killed, which is, was their whole plan. But, but you know what God says? You know what Joseph said to his brothers? What y'all meant for evil, God meant for good. So what these guys, they were after Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, uh, ended up trying to, they, they thought they was fixing to distinguish or extinguish the Lord and his ways. They just fired it up, literally. Who were persecuted for their faith by the Babylonian king Nebuchadnezzar? And it asks you to reread the story there in Daniel, chapter three. What about the story stands out to you as a new insight? What, what I, I wrote down? It is something to think about. Do you have truly unshakable, unmovable faith? Do you? I mean, the faith of a child, I mean, you get, you get in a deep end of a pool, and a kid that trusts you can't swim a lake, and you swim out there and say, jump, I got you. Nine out of ten of them are gonna not think twice, because they have complete faith in you. See, Jesus sometimes is saying, I'm right here. Come on. And we're like, mm, that's a little deep for me, though. I'm, I'm just not willing to go, I might get hurt.
Well, Jesus, what's always stuck up with me in that pattern is that they said their God could deliver them, and they believed it. But if he chooses not to, we still are not gonna go against him.
That's right.
And, um, that's the faith we should have, if they had, even if he chooses not to heal us.
That's right.
Or to protect us, that's all right. We still, our faith is in him.
That's right, your eternity is secure. And that's where they were. They knew they had faith in their Lord. And, and their Lord was not Nebuchadnezzar. So just kind of wrapping up, last couple of things there. Said, history shows that in virtually all cases where martyrdom of Christians occurred on a fairly widespread basis, guess what? The kingdom of God flourished in the aftermath. I still believe we're gonna have a revival. It's gonna, it's gonna spread across this nation, because the church is under a, a, a different type of persecution now. So how do you respond to that fact? You look at history. When, when there's been a heavy, heavy persecution on Christians, it, it began to flourish. Why do you believe this occurs? So if others don't see a true sacrifice, then what's the big deal? If there's no true persecution, and then no true faith, no unshakable, unmovable faith, then there's no big deal. God uses those opportunities to show who he really is. A woman once said, I'm not afraid of dying for my faith. I'm just concerned about the suffering before I die. So I'm willing to die, I just don't wanna have to suffer before I die. That's how a lot of us are. That, that's, that's, that's a shallow faith. That's at, that mile long and quarter inch deep. If I have any hesitation in sharing my faith, it's a hesitation related to suffering. It's a quote from that lady. So do you agree or disagree with her statement? I, I don't agree with her statement. What fears keep us from engaging in evangelistic activities as frequently, publicly, or as boldly as we might? So what stops us? What stops us from being faithful? What stops us from living in a manner that is evangelical? You know, that is sharing the gospel? Any examples of what may stop us?
Esther was to go before the king to beg for relief. And she said, knowing that without limitation of the king, it could mean death. And she said, and if I perish, I perish. I'm broken. That's the book that's named after her.
She went in faith. Not in the king, not in her, what she was seeking after, but in her God.
And the man that had planned to have the man put to death, built the gallows for him to be hanged on. It ended up being a hanged-on-his-own gala. God turned it around.
That's right. Matthew, chapter eight, verse 26. And he said unto them, why are you fearful, oh ye of little faith? Matthew, chapter 16, and verse eight. Which when Jesus perceived, he said unto them, oh ye of little faith, why reason ye among yourselves, because you have brought no bread? We, we kind of referred to these scriptures a minute ago. And he says, you know, here you are, church people over here trying to figure out what we're gonna do, because we have no bread. And he says, oh ye of little faith. So what fears keep us from engaging in evangelistic activities? Mostly a lack of faith. And that lack of faith is mostly derived or born from a lack of faithfulness. And this in turn grows a lack of willingness. No faithfulness, no faith, no willingness. It, it, it grows, the more you learn about something, the more confident you become. So any last thoughts? Comments? Questions? All right. Well, you have homework. Lesson number three. It is a little bit shorter than, than the others. But lesson number three, living and precious stones. It said, living stones, human beings united together by Christ's saving grace to be a great fortress of faith, monument of God's love, and sanctuary of forgiveness and comfort. So, all right, y'all would bow with me a little closer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. Thank you for your study that you've given us, the opportunity, the freedom, the privilege, the comfort that you've given us to be here. Lord, we pray for our, our group that's traveling back to town. Lord, just you watch over them, pray that they'll be blessed by seeing the reenactment of what happened many, many years ago. Lord, may, what made each one of us look within ourselves, Lord, and may we determine, are we making provisions for the flesh? Are we participating in, partaking in, allowing things within our life, Lord, that are not only not bringing any glory to you, but maybe it's absolutely bringing shame to the ministry that you've handed us, to our witness, to our faith, to our testimony, Lord? But I pray, Lord, if there be one here tonight that's never accepted you, is their Lord and Savior, I pray today they will be born again. Lord, we love you for your, your goodness, your faithfulness, your mercy, just because of who you are, Lord, we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.